Councilmember Milam.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume that the community invocation will be led by Larry Woodard with the Ten Mile Christian Church if you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Welcome Larry. You know, this is the last meeting. You can do the invocation with Mr. Byrd here.
I have notes on that.
Oh, I, you know, I would have been surprised, I think, if you didn't. So, thank you for coming.
What a relief that'll be.
[laughter]
I tell you what, I've appreciated every one of your prayers. They've helped us get through these meetings. Thank you very much, Larry.
You bet. Thank you. Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to thank you for this council and its leadership of our city in 2017. But in this Christmas week, we thank you even more for sending your son, Jesus, to offer us an even better life. I pray tonight that in this Christmas season, we will all appreciate the men and women of Meridian that protect us and make this such a great place to live and work. The growth of our city continues to amaze with new construction popping up everywhere. I pray that the workers will be protected on these projects. In this next year, some real challenges are before us, and I pray that this council continues to exhibit the wisdom needed to keep this city on a path that strengthens families, protects the very young, and the very old. I pray for our police as they, along with other agencies, fight the battle against drugs moving through and into our area. It's an epidemic, and safety of our officers and our residents is needed. Sooner or later, we're going to get our winter snow, even tonight, and I ask for safety of our residents and city staff as the snow settles into Treasure Valley. It's a dangerous time for all with an increase in wrecks, slips on snowy sidewalks, and it's just harder to get around. Tonight, may we be a part of a national wave of prayer for our country. The threat of nuclear war is unnerving, and we ask for your protection. Be with our young men and women who are in the armed services and keep our nation safe. Be with our leaders, and may they make good decisions. Our future is built in part on the great memories we have of our early years. May the children and youth of Meridian have great memories of their time in this city. Our city continues to attract newcomers from places like California and Seattle. Many come to unite with children who have moved here earlier. May we find that Meridian is a great place to live, and may we not lose the small-town feel, even when Caldwell, Nampa, Meridian, Starr, Eagle, and Boise all grow together into one large metro area. And in closing, I want to thank you for the years of service by Keith Byrd. His example of leadership of this council will be long remembered. I pray that his years of retirement are enjoyable and of good health, and we thank you for him. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Larry, very much.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
We do, in the consent agenda, have been requested to add a Y, which is award of RFQ and approval of agreement to Rice, Fergus, Miller Incorporated for the Fire Station Six Pre-Design and Programming Services project for not to exceed amount of $93,607. This is something that we felt could go on there because Mark kind of, he brought us up to speed last week's meeting over that. So, with that, I would move, or wait a minute, I'm sorry, item nine, B, the applicant request continuance to January 23rd. And with that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor, there were no sign-ups this evening for item five.
Thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
As the consent, as I noted earlier, we had an addition, item I, which was a reward of RFQ and approval of agreement with Rice, Fergus, Miller Incorporated. And with that, I move we approve the amended consent agenda, and for the mayor to sign the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move into our community presentations. Item eight A is under Republic Services and our SWAC updated report. And we had Steve Corey talk with us a couple of weeks ago and back to give an update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I do want to take this opportunity to specifically thank Councilman Byrd for his advice and all his support over the years. We very much appreciated it. At your request, I'm back here with Conrad to go ahead and talk about the recyclable markets and some changes that we're going to have to implement. Recyclable markets have not improved since my last presentation, and in fact, there's a development I'll have to discuss after we go through the plastics portion. Plastics recycling will change January 1st, 2018. Republic will continue to accept current materials through the first quarter of 2018 while they're educating customers. But from that point, what they're going to be making clear is the only acceptable plastics will be milk jugs, pop and soda bottles, fruit juice bottles and jugs, and detergent jugs. Republic has worked with Meridian Utility Billing to determine service addresses as opposed to billing addresses. Their current planned outreach is to send a postcard out to each of the service addresses announcing the changes and showing what is allowed to go into the recycle carts and what should be thrown away or recycled elsewhere. Second, they will have an updated municipal trash and recycling brochure and a decal, a new decal, for the recycling materials bins to identify what is acceptable, and that'll be sent to each of the service households early in 2018. Third, they will have an updated oops cart, card. The oops card is a hard card that the drivers leave on the recycling carts when the cart contains unacceptable materials. The new cards will have the updated list of acceptable plastics and our new outreach protocol. If the driver sees unacceptable plastics going into their trucks, there's really nothing they're gonna, the first time they're going to see it is when the cart's being dumped into the truck. They will get out of their truck and leave a card to say that there was a problem with that pickup. The next time they come to pick up recycled materials at that address, they will actually get out and look into the cart to see if the material is correct. And if it is not, they'll leave a card there telling the person that the materials are not correct and that they need to go ahead and clean up the materials that are being left in their cart. If there are still plastics not accepted in the program, let's see, well, let's see, going ahead here. They will be asking the customer to pull the unacceptable plastics out, and Republic has offered that they will send a truck back to collect the acceptable materials once notified by the customer that the cart is ready to go. And then furthermore, in every outreach piece, Republic will be thanking the customers for their patience and, as Republic is moving quickly to respond to the global market conditions. Republic has committed that all of the developed materials will be sent to Meridian Utility Billing and to SWAC for a final review before they go out, and we certainly stand ready to forward those additionally if there are other people who want to see the material and see what's being developed. Now, as I mentioned, well, I should say that commercial recycling program changes will be coming soon. And the change that I was alluding to at the start of this is mixed paper is tenuous at this point. This week, the buyer for mixed paper revoked their contracts to Western Recycling. And so, Western Recycling has been storing mixed paper at their facility over on Coal Road. They will run out of room to be able to store mixed paper at the end of this week. So, there may have to be a change to this outreach program in association with mixed paper. Republic has indicated that, based on conversations with Western at this point, if we lose mixed paper, Western may be able to run the recycled materials across the first portion of their sorting facility over there, but they'll invert what they were doing, whereas in the past, they were just pulling out trash. Now, they're going to pull out the aluminum cans, the tin cans, the plastic threaded bottles and cardboard, the stuff that we can get money for, and then the rest of the material would be going up to Hidden Hall or some, or the North Ravine landfill area. And with that, that is the current situation and a review of the education plan that worth looking at, and we certainly stand for any questions or recommendations or comments that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions for Steve or Conrad?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
What a nightmare. What, when we have more idea about the mixed paper, I, my concern is really sending a, getting a message out there to the people and then changing the message shortly thereafter. As part of the first half, the, on the other flip side, if Western is going to sort through it anyway, then why are we moving plastics now, and why are we including that in whatever they're going to take out?
As to your first question, on the mixed paper, basically unless there's some kind of a magical intervention this week, then that will have to be addressed. So, that's going to happen before this education campaign comes together, and I would imagine it'll be included in the education campaign if there isn't an immediate improvement in the mixed paper situation. And I would tend to say at that point, to your second point, I think you probably stated it better than I did, which is that this will change, that basically what can go in the bins will be in the education campaign, and as soon as the public responds over the course of this quarter, that will definitely be the norm by the end, by March 31st. The sooner the better. And basically, what's going to be happening at Western is they're going to be pulling out the remaining materials that have value rather than what they were doing the last couple of months, pulling out the stuff that was waste.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So, in the education about the plastics, you're going to also include the education about the paper. We're not going to have this in two separate cycles, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Correct. By the time it's printed, we'll have a, and approved by SWAC, approved by Utility Billing, we will have a more clear idea on whether or not, on where we stand with mixed paper at that time. And the goal is always do it right the first time.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Steve or Conrad, give me some, I guess, thoughts on, this is a, we talked about this the last time here, there's a pretty substantial shift in how we're operating our program, and I appreciate the outreach efforts Republic's going to be making. Is there a plan then from SWAC to come and provide us an update, maybe at the three-month or the six-month mark? I guess what is Republic's plans to address any questions, comments, concerns that our public is going to face in response? It's one thing to leave a, here's an important piece of information that you know you're not doing it right, to people saying, well, they believe they're doing it right because it's the way they've been doing it forever. And I'm not saying that they should always be able to do things the way they want, but I know that in the past, we have found, as an organization, we think we need to do X. After going through X amount of time, we find out Y is actually maybe a better route. So, can you, has Republic contemplated any of that? Is there a plan to provide us an update at the three-month or the six-month mark? And I appreciate the outreach you're doing to the city, but your plans to come back to council would also be appreciated.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, thank you for the question. Yes, there will be a period between now and, as Steve mentioned, the end of March, where it'll be an education process. And I've, just as an example, my aunt is a diehard recycler, and I told her a few weeks ago, please, hold off on your plastics. It's, it's actually contamination for everything else that's good for recycling at the moment. And she, she can't let plastics go. So, she, she continues to recycle that. My point is, during those first 90 days, three months, we will be continuing to outreach with communities and educating them on, please just threaded-neck bottles, hard container bottles, ones and twos, at this moment, that's the best route for recycling. As Steve mentioned, mixed paper is at risk. So, and that's due to too many low-quality plastics in the stream, so it's creating contamination for mixed waste paper. And so, the education will be, if we can, if we can get rid of, or not, if we can get the material that's not wanted in the recycle stream, we'll be able to save the rest of the recycling. And that's, I think that's the point we really want to drive home. And so, the first three months, it will be an education process, because we've been recycling plastics for so long now that muscle memory hits, it's going to take some time.
Madam Mayor, fault, if I may. Conrad, I guess then to that point, does Republic have a benchmark or a goal, hope that after 30 days, that you're going to reduce the amount of plastics by X amount percent, and by 60 days, X percent? Can you share with us that and kind of where you're hoping you would, that finish line would at least be after 90 days?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, thank you. I have not heard of a target goal other than we need to get the plastics three through seven, and the non-threaded plastics out of there as soon as possible. And, and the less we have in the stream, the better it will be. I have not heard of a, of a goal line. Steve, has SWAC discussed that, or Ada County?
Councilman Cavanagh, thank you for that input on this. No, I have not heard anyone present it, but I think it's a very good idea that we need to have regular statuses of how things are cleaning up. And, and I'm more than happy to deliver that information to the council as we get it.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, any, anything further?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, yeah.
That's what Conrad said coming in. This is probably not the best subject right before Christmas, but, you know, I guess what SWAC and Republic Services find themselves looking at is either we change our recycling habits, or whatever we put in the bins gets put in the landfill. So, and if we're going to recycle, we want to recycle correctly. So, we appreciate the information and coming back with a marketing plan and, and best how to help our citizens know that a change is underway, and to be good stewards, how we can continue to make sure what we throw in our recycling bins actually gets recycled. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council, and we'll keep you informed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for all your work.
Okay, item eight B is under our Meridian Arts Commission, and here's Hillary to talk about the mural update. We're excited to see what it looks like.
I'm not showing you what it looks like today. There's still one more step. I know, I'm sorry.
But it's Christmas.
It's Christmas. That would have been such a nice present for everyone. We're not quite there yet. So, before we can get a design, we need to really get that master agreement in place and then a task order in place for that. I neglected at the last time that I was before you to also have a formal budget amendment for that contribution from MDC. So, I'm before you today to ask for that funding allocation so that we have spending authority for those $16,000 that MDC has agreed to contribute for the mural. Pending your approval of that budget amendment, I just wanted to share with you that process that we're going to go through for contracting with the artists, which is extending them a master agreement, and then underneath that master agreement, extending them task orders as those tasks are completed and as they're meeting the needs of all the stakeholders involved, that being the city, the ZAMZOS, and MDC. Keeping it short for you guys.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Thank you for keeping it short, Hillary.
Trying.
But we still want to see the pictures.
I know.
I know. Did we not approve the budget amendment?
You approved the agreement.
The agreement.
But I needed to have a formal budget amendment and request.
Is that the only thing that you need today, is the budget amendment approval?
Well, and the approval for us to release those, those agreements. That's, you'll see the agreements again once they're signed by the artists, but I just wanted to let you know that process that we're going through. So, if you're not happy with it, you could tell me no.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Hillary, nothing against you or the mural, but just like, the federal government's got debt, and so I have a hard time voting for CGBG stuff. MDC's got debt. They're spending money on art. They need to pay off their debt before they go spending money on things like this.
Any questions for Hillary?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Maybe not a question for Hillary, but maybe for our two MDC board members. How much debt does MDC currently have? Do we know?
We did get an update. I just, off the top of my head, just cannot recall, but art has been part of their plan, and they do dedicate a small amount to that in honoring that plan.
I'm like Tammy. Luke, I don't, I can't remember what the, what the debt is. But I will tell you that we've stayed under budget. We, the debt was taken out when we want, and which we hope will start driving downtown revitalization. So, but I can't tell you off the, whether it's a dollar, or whether it's a million dollars, or $10 million or what, but I guarantee it in that.
Hope not.
I think when the board did the Compass VRT building, that was built into their budget through the term of the loan. So, and, and they're on schedule. I just don't know what the outstanding balance is.
And we did, through our budgets, we did the Pine, Locust Grove to Main Street on Pine, and we come in with, what, $35,000 savings from what our budget was. So, we, or in fact, Luke, we just got our audit, and Kevin said it was one of the finest audits that they do, and they do do the cities, too.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for you, Hillary.
Sure.
How pressing is getting this budget amendment approved this evening versus giving council an opportunity to at least hear what the current debt is for MDC?
I think that's really up to the council. We'd like, the sooner that the budget amendment is approved, the sooner that we can move forward with the project. That being said, the installation for the project can't take place in December and January, so it would likely be spring. But at that November meeting that I was here, you did accept that agreement with MDC for their contribution. So, this is just the spending authority for that allocation.
Madam Mayor, just, just a comment then. Obviously, I wasn't aware that if this is new debt or different debt, it sounds like, at least for me, there's still some questions that are up in the air about MDC. I don't want to get in the way of council wanting to move forward, but I would feel more comfortable at least knowing what that number was before I would be on board with being supportive of.
Agreed to it.
I, but, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Milam, to me, this is some new information that I wasn't privy to, and that's what's caused my, at least, change. I, I'm not opposed to it by any means. I just would like to have that question answered before I would be comfortable being supportive of both.
Well, Mr. Cavanagh, it's, it's nothing new since you served on MDC. It's the same loan that they had at that time. So, it is not new. This is the only debt that they've had, if that helps.
Madam Mayor, that is helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything further from council?
Madam Mayor.
Motion.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve the budget amendment for spending authority not to exceed $16,000 for the mural.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sir Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you, Hillary.
Madam Mayor, was there something else you needed included in that?
Task order.
No, just as long as you guys are comfortable with us pursuing the master agreement and task order as we've lined out. And those will come back to you for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under action items, item number nine. Item A is the appointment of Cameron Ariel as the Community Development Director. Counsel, we have a summary of the interview process and the number of applicants we had, what they were narrowed down to after the first set of screening, which was a telephone interview. And those names that moved forward into the official interview process, which had a community presentation, two panels, one employee and public-based, and the other one private panel of partners. And then we moved into the second phase of interviews, moving three candidates forward, and had a second day of interviews, starting with a discussion with the Community Development Direct, or Department, and followed up with interviews and, and one-on-ones with the direct reports of the planning and the building side, as well as myself, and then a one-on-one with me. Last week, I did give a summary in writing that you got a memo form, and the name that you have in front of you, Cameron, has a very deep resume in terms of how you have in front of you, Cameron, has a very deep resume in terms of how he can bring talents and his educational experience to the department, to the benefit of the city, and his most recent role as the Development Director at Athol's Academies, where he spent the last two years, going through land acquisition, development, and through entitlement processes in other states and cities, as well as our neighboring city, bringing the experiences that he had in that realm, as well as in his academics with his planning background and his breadth of, of knowledge in the public sector. So, I'm honored to bring Cameron Ariel as my appointment as the Community Development Director and would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Not a question, but I would also like to state, in 20 years and a whole bunch of department heads, this is the first time City Council has had a chance to interview a candidate. I believe you took it way above and beyond the duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I would move for the appointment of Cameron Ariel as Community Development Director.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Cameron Ariel as the Community Development Director. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you, Council, and I know you've already heard from Mr. Ariel, and you'll be certainly hearing from him again. I know he's anxious to sit down, get your, your perspective, your vision, and any ideas as, as he works with his team to move forward. So, his starting date is January 16th, and we look forward to having him on board, and I see Mr. Jorgensen sitting in the audience. Thank you for your participation on our panel. Well, with that, I will move to the next item, item 9B, the final plat for Castle Creek subdivision. The applicant requests to continue to January 23rd. Does Caleb, is, is there a reason that was stated for this request?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the applicant ran into a PI water source issue, and so they're trying to figure that out and hoping that it doesn't affect the layout of their plat, but they did run into a source water issue for their pressurized irrigation system, so that's the reason.
Thank you. Council, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we continue H-2017-0150 to January 23rd, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue H-2017-0150 to January 23rd, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9C is a public hearing for a Community Development Block Grant program, and I'll turn this over to Chris.
Yes, dear Chris. Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I thought we could get this a little more exciting for our, our crowd here today by revisiting our discussion from last week on slum and blight, if you all are okay with that.
Um, no.
No, no, okay. We won't go that way. We'll, we'll do the much less exciting thing today, and we'll review what we talked about a couple of weeks ago with Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for this last program year in 2016. Just to remind everybody what this is, in case there's anybody here who wants to give public comment today, this, this CAPER is what we call it, is essentially an evaluation of the performance of, of the Community Development or C, Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program here at the city over the last year in relation to the strategic plan, the consolidated plan that was put into place back in 2012. This also is essentially here to account for the use of financial funds and other resources, including time, a review of the programs, procedures and processes, examination of timelines and the effectiveness of the programs, to look at the decisions that were made in the program over the year, and then any accomplishments or goals that were met or not met during this last program year. And again, just to give you reference, between October 1st of 2016 to, or September 30th of this year is what we're talking about. So, anything that's happened since September 30th is not up for discussion. There's, there's a lot that has happened and that we've talked about, and we'll discuss that moving forward, but that's not part of this particular report. Just to give a brief review of the financial accounting, oh, there's a comma in the wrong place. That should say $369,250.60 of CDBG funds have been expended throughout this last program year, focused on public services, public facilities, and other projects to some of the usual suspects like the Meridian Food Bank, the Boys and Girls Club, but also to new sub recipients like Jesse Tree for their homelessness prevention program, to MDC focusing on sidewalks through the city, working with contractors to, to work on developing new streetlights in certain areas where there are none, as well as providing ADA accessibility upgrades to the Story Park restroom, and expanding some facilities at the elementary school. And then obviously, there are a couple of plans in the consolidated plan and the slum and blight plan that were completed this year in addition to program administration expenses, the creation and distribution of the Senior Resource Guide through the mayor's office, and then also the Ada County Housing Authority, Neighborhoods Boise's Home Buyer Assistance Programs, which were both funded this year. And again, this is just an accounting for the amount of money that was spent during this program year and not what has been accounted or what has been allotted during the program year. Just a quick review of the accomplishments. Over 81% of the funds went directly to LMI residents of the community, serving over 80,000 of, 80,000 people, both in Meridian and throughout the county, helping five new families being able to find affordable housing, allowing 22 families and children to have access to the Boys and Girls Clubs programs, preventing homelessness for another five families, providing information and resources for over 900 seniors, food access for over 7,000 people over the span of just one quarter of this year, three new plans that will helpfully increase the effectiveness and the efficiency of the program and how we utilize these funds moving forward, and the development and completion of at least one new public facility over this time with many more to come. And how that relates to our consolidated goals or our strategic goals for the last five years, we more than doubled every goal that we set with the funds that we utilized, which I think is, is good in terms of our accounting to the federal government for using these funds in a way that really makes a difference. In addition, just to highlight some other activities that are going to this report that the CDBG program is involved in the Ada County Continuum of Care, the Housing and Homelessness Round Tables, the Idaho Fair Housing Forum, and other local, regional, and state groups and activities that focus on trying to understand, identify, and meet some of the needs that Meridian residents are facing, particularly around the issues of housing, homelessness, affordable housing, and any, any services or help that is, or issues that face particularly the LMI group. For those who don't know, LMI, just to make sure that I'm clear here, is low and moderate income residents of the community. So, with that, I would invite Madam Mayor and the Council to open the public hearing to consider any comments. I would, I would say before so that, just a reminder that this is a report that is a reflection on what has been accomplished and does not propose anything moving into the future. It is not planning or offering any suggestions about the effectiveness of the program moving into future program years, just what happened and what we accomplished. But I would offer, I would invite you to open that hearing at this time.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
On the slide, we thought that had all the block boxes with the numbers on it, were those, are these Meridian numbers or are these Ada County numbers? What were these? Because...
So, all of the numbers except for the $85,000 is a Meridian number.
Okay.
The $85,000 is a pretty complex conversation in terms of how it's counted in the system the federal government runs. There can be crossover, or for example, if, if there is one family who goes to the food bank multiple times over the span of the program year, they're counted each time that they visit. In addition, the food bank does a lot of services, particularly with residents outside of Meridian. They don't turn anybody away, it's part of their mission. Those numbers also come into this conversation in terms of what is reported in that $85,000 number. All of the other ones are specifically for Meridian residents.
You have seven, $7,000 in a different box for food.
Yes, yes. So, $7,000 in a different box, in terms of, we have this number, so we're getting into, I get really excited about this, so I'll try not to get too deep into this, but the $7,000 number is looking specifically at Meridian residents who are LMI who received funding during the three months in which the Meridian Food Bank was utilizing our funds. Because the Meridian Food Bank, they're really efficient, they're really good at utilizing the money, they generally have one quarter of work and then they don't report on anything else. That $7,000 is Meridian residents during that period of time. But the organization also has to offer up numbers in terms of their annual reports. How many people did this organization help? HUD wants to see where the money went specifically, but also what do HUD-funded organizations through CDBG also do to help the community? And that's where you see this 85 number start to look at more of the annual group of people and also the recidivism of individuals who keep, or who receive services on multiple occasions. So, that's kind of the variance there. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mylum?
Thank you.
On the Mayor's Senior Advisory Board, the Resource Guide, are those numbers in there?
So, the way that this is counted, again, this is the federal government system that we're working with. We, we produced, I think if I remember correctly, 950 reports. Those were all intended to be, as far as I understood from the mayor's office, they were all handed out to particular stakeholders throughout the community in different locations. They were made available. With this information being made available, we were able to count every single resource guide going, assuming that it would all go to one person, one resource guide per person, those numbers come into here, if that makes sense. So, if there's 950...
Yes, I, I wondered about that, and certainly the locations that those went out to, I know our senior board members, they did distribute it to LMI eligible facilities, but they also have access to it online, and so you don't count any of those touches.
And, and that's where it gets more difficult. I, I can, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I can reach out to IT to see if we can get some more information on specific page views.
I just wondered how you were tracking.
Yeah, and I hadn't even considered that, so thank you for bringing that up. That's something we can definitely look at in terms of our reporting and accounting.
And I, I do know, we, we give it to our places of worship, and they have been very appreciative because while they like the senior blue book, this does make it specific to Meridian, and they use it for their congregants, so thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and I would just like to add that, and I think this extends beyond these numbers, that we have 900 resource guides that, we hope it gets beyond 900 seniors who find this information, these resources. It becomes much more difficult to count and then report, but at the very minimum, we're happy to help 900 folks as, as much as we can with this information, and that extends to some of our other services and programs as well through this program.
Thank you. Any further questions from Council? Okay, thank you, Chris. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this item? Yes, Ralph. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Chappell, 1-899-SOUTH-WON, Meridian.
I knew you knew the routine.
You bet. I'm definitely against this, as you know, and since we have a bunch of young kids in here, I'll let them know that this money, they're talking about $369,000 plus, it's not free. It's coming from the federal government. So, who's going to pay this money back? You guys are. You and your kids are going to pay all that money back over your time, all time you go to work.
You need to speak into the microphone.
All time you go to work, you're going to be paying for this bill. It's not something we really need. If you just raised taxes 3% here in the city, yet you can't go building sidewalks and what have you with the money you use, yet you're going to go to the federal government who's $20 trillion in debt plus, take that money and come in here? No. So far as I know, this is one of the programs that President Trump is going to eliminate, and the sooner the better. That's all I have, just, they need to know that they're going to pay for it. I'll be gone.
Thank you, Ralph.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Ralph, would you be open to a question?
I sure am.
The items that we're going to be paying for with CDBG funds, would you be supportive of the city using property tax dollars for those same programs?
If we need them, yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer testimony? Seeing none, Council. We do have an open public hearing. If you have nothing further for Chris or any of our public that are here, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I move we close the public hearing on the 2016 CAPER.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I would like to add to Ralph's comment that after today, the federal budget is now up another 1.5 trillion over the next 10 years. I just want to make that point, and in addition to what Ralph said, totally irrelevant. But in general, I'd like to move or invite you all to consider the action item to approve and adopt Resolution 17-2503, 2053, that gives me the authority to send this report to the federal government. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Unless there's any comments, I would move that we approve Resolution 17-2053.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9C. Any discussion from Council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just so that Ralph doesn't smack me, we're, the resolution is to approve the report of what was done. We're not approving expenditure of any funds, so I'm all for reporting.
It's mostly about giving me the authority to actually send this in the mail more than anything.
Thank you. Thank you, Santa Claus. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item 10A is Ordinance 17-1755A. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 17-1755A, an amended ordinance filed H-2017-0114, a G in subdivision, for annexation of a portion of the northwest quarter of Section 33, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 65.29 acres of land from R-U-T to R-4, medium-low density residential district, 25.79 acres, and R-8, medium-density residential district, 36.50 acres, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You have heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? The entire one is even more exciting than the title.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Seeing none, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 17-1755A with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance under 10A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Hey, Mr. Byrd, you vote aye? Yes. All ayes, motion carried. Ordinance 10B is Ordinance 17-1758. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by... Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number seventeen dash one seven five eight, an ordinance of the City of Meridian in Ada County, Idaho, amending Meridian City Code Section five dash four dash one zero regarding public fireworks display, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I think Mr. Byrd might need some more pins. You've heard this read by title. If there's no questions, counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash one seven five eight with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item ten B. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
All ayes, must carry. Item ten C is ordinance seventeen dash one seven five nine. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number seventeen dash one seven five nine, an ordinance of the City of Meridian in Ada County, Idaho, repealing and replacing Title Four, Chapter Two, Meridian City Code regarding nuisances, specifically definitions, responsible party, procedures and penalties for abatable nuisances, procedures and penalties for general nuisances, hindering authorized person, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read by title. Seeing no one in the audience who would like to hear it read further, Ms. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash one seven five nine with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item ten C. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, must carry. Item ten D is ordinance seventeen dash one seven six zero. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number seventeen dash one seven six zero, an ordinance, file AZ fifteen dash zero one two, Village Apartments, for annexation and rezone of a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Four, Township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of said lands from R U T to C G, General Retail and Service Commercial District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. You've heard this read by title. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash one seven six zero with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ten D. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes, must carry. Counsel, I do see the appointment we confirmed earlier, Cameron Ariel. Cameron, would you like to say anything? Not to put you on the spot, but yes, to put you on the spot.
Put me on the spot. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, it's, it is indeed a pleasure to be with you. Apologize, I'm just rolling into town from Lewiston, we had a bond closing up there, but glad to be here in one piece, but I just wanted to say thank you. I just learned you've already voted, so I just wanted to say thank you for that vote of confidence and just express my appreciation for the process, I think, to all involved, Crystal, Madam Mayor, others that worked hard to put all of those things together, and I, I thoroughly enjoyed that. I think it'll make me a better director by going through that process, and I just look forward to rolling up my sleeves and partnering with all of you to, to move the city forward in a, in a positive way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cameron. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Counsel, under future meeting topics, we did open bids today for our South Meridian Park. This will be put on our January ninth workshop and we'll bring back the results and any add alternatives that we might be able to include in the project. So, I, I do know counsel asked for a couple of moments to make remarks, and so I'll open it up. This is open mic, end of the year.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I just wanna thank all you guys for serving with me, doing a great job. Emmy, eighteen years went fast, and now your back won't probably hurt as much because you won't be having to carry me.
Vice versa.
I, I can't say enough about you, young lady. This community, and I'm repeating myself, this community is so blessed to have had you and Jan decide to make it your home and then for you to get involved, because you have done way, way more for this community than people ever will know, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, Mr. Byrd, I had a great role model and mentor, and certainly while we might not have always seen eye to eye, and sometimes I didn't even like you, but I've always loved you.
If Luke were to kill, I'd have been dead.
But it's, it's been an honor to, to serve. I, I think you've left a huge legacy, not just in what you've done in the city by advocating for business parks like Eldorado and Silverstone, or transportation projects like the Locust Grove Overpass, that goes a little ways back, or Ten Mile and Meridian Interchange, your heart for downtown and your advocacy for parks, but more, more so is for your advocacy for youth. I, I think that there's not very many kids who have not enjoyed athletic programs in this community that don't understand that they're enjoying that because of the groundwork that you laid, and like Mr. Borton said in his comments, my kids too have been recipients of your generosity and your support of our youth, and I owe you a great deal of.
Almost made it.
Of gratitude for all you've done.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
When Councilman Borton suggested that we all say a few words, I think we've all been so blessed that I keep thinking there's not much left to say that it's been covered, but I learned tonight the, the legacy that he leaves, even deeper than I realized it went, and we're just so blessed that our kids and, and grandkids will be blessed by the legacy that Councilman Byrd has left Meridian, and I've been very blessed personally. He's always been, you know, right there, sometimes with a boot, sometimes with a kind word, but has been just, just really a great role model and a, a wealth of knowledge that this counsel is definitely going to miss, and just from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I appreciate the opportunity to thank you, Councilman Byrd, on the public record. You are a mentor to me. I could probably summarize it best, the way you taught how to lead, and you shared the sentiment with me, that nobody is better than you and you're better than nobody. Appreciate that. Always will.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Byrd, the thing that's always stood out to me the most about you is, is your, you epitomize Meridian's family values by, you demonstrated by your sincere concern for others and their families. It's easy to exchange pleasantries, hey, how are you? How is your family? But there is nobody who's asked me that, but then has gone through and asked how each of my childrens were by their names and confirming their ages. Didn't even have to ask, how old is he now? It's, okay, now Reagan's two, right? Or four now, or whatever. I don't even remember how old he is. And I've, I've always really appreciated that and have looked for opportunities to, to drop by council early to, to study from here because I knew how often you were gonna be here and the things that I built to learn from you while you were here, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ty, very much. You young bucks have got to be the leaders.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
All right, Keith. I wrote you a poem. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to read this, and I'm not a poet, okay, so, but I, I wanted to say something to you that, so anyway, it's called "Thank You," an ode to Thank you for creating sports leagues for our children to play. Thank you for bringing more parks for our families to enjoy. Thank you for guiding the growth of our city for the benefit of all. Thank you for your selfless dedication to our community. Thank you for believing in me and your constant encouragement. Thank you for twenty years of continual service on the council. Thank you for always caring and asking about me and my family. Thank you for helping me grow to be a better council member. Thank you, Keith Byrd, for being godfather to Meridian.
Mr. Cavanagh.
It's very rare that I can't find words, and it's fitting that when we decided we were gonna do this, I have been struggling. Marge wants to know when's dinner, I'll be quick. But, okay, no, that was perfect. I should just stop. Like the rest of counsel, the word "thanks, Keith" just don't seem to do your service justice. I'm thankful though for the impact you've made on my family, myself included. Nineteen eighty-five is when I played optimist baseball. We're the optimists. All the other teams gotta be the Yankees, the Giants, but we were the optimists, big chicken, ugly jerseys. And what I love is the legacy and that gutter played, NYB and Paul Spalding and Lincoln. I can't even imagine the sports that are going to resonate from that seed that you planted, and it had me thinking of, you know, I'll, I'll be real honest, I'm very lucky in that I got to work with Keith in a number of different capacities, and when I started here as a City of Employee, and I'm glad I'm putting this on the record, Keith Byrd intimidated the hell out of me. I wish I could say that's changed, but Keith Byrd still intimidates the hell out of me. But what I noticed as an employee is that having Keith Byrd on the council meant there was always an advocate for our employees. Always wanted to make sure the employees felt like they were taken care of, if they had a concern, or they had a question, or they wanted to find out how to be more involved in our community, Keith was always there for them. And as an employee, I always valued that. I noticed that Keith Byrd is this giant, great oak tree of our community, and what I didn't notice at the time, but I notice now today, is that as that oak tree has grown, he's bared fruit, and that fruit has fallen and been planted in the ground, and when you look at Meridian, there are new trees that are growing. They're all a result of this giant, mighty oak that we have had in our community, and that's fruit for our families, it's fruit for our employment sector, it's fruit for council, it's fruit for Meridian. Biggest thing that I want to thank Keith for is not for the wisdom or the guidance for slapping me upside the head, or for intimidating me, or holding me accountable. Those are all those things that Keith did really, really well, but Keith planted, my favorite seed Keith planted that I will hold dear, is that no matter how big Meridian gets, we will never be a city, we will always be a community. And if there's anybody that was a beacon that we always have and always will be, is a community. So, on behalf of a community that has benefited in more ways than we can ever count, and even though the words do not do it justice, thank you, Keith Byrd, for all you've done for our community.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you very, very much for the kind words, as I've said before. I've, I've received a lot more from this community and you, you guys demonstrate that. I know the city's in great hands, we're gonna, we're gonna go forward, probably be better. Trag will get on air and do a great job. Joe's leadership, Emmy's, it's, and you guys all work hard. I, I just appreciate it. I, words, as you said, Luke, words can't describe the feelings I've had over the last year since a young lady told me that they were naming a park in my honor. I just, it's, it's unreal.
Well, Keith will live on in our, our council meetings. Your words will ring in our heads, and I wanted to throw my pin, all I know. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
I'll comment.
And I'll, and I'll give Ty a list of the...